Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Our first item on our list is the, any adjustments to the agenda?
And I Yeah, there's no adjustments, but I did send out a revised agenda today with the numbers that were missing. But when we get to that, I will say what they are for people who be some people on here who would never receive that revised agenda. So not changed, just updated.
All right. Thank you very much, Jim. All right. Moving on to considering the minutes from last week. Most item 2.1 to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board meeting of March 15th, 2023 and March 29th, 2023 workshops as written or with corrections.
So moved.
A second.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anybody have something they would like to discuss? Hearing none. Is this where I say, what do I say about making it pass? What did I say?
A motion passed. In this case, it'd be three to zero.
Okay. All right.
Oh, um, Alicia just came up.
Don't I have to say, hang on, don't I have to say hello, Alicia? I don't, help me out here. I think I say something like.
Oh, you didn't take attendance. That's right.
Oh, sorry. All right. Well, um, do you want to take a, does anyone want to make a motion to have the minutes accepted as written?
I thought you did that.
Oh, I thought that's a discussion.
Yeah, we just did that.
All right. We're set then. All right. Could we please vote?
Maybe you can just say aye.
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 I can see everybody.
Aye.
All right. That is four to zero.
Yep.
All right. Section three is for public comments. This is not intended to, are there any public comments?
I think Steve has some.
Hey, good evening all. And just potentially a point of clarification. Do you accept public comment during specific agenda items, or is it only for items that aren't listed on the agenda? And I have a, have a fellow participant who is really eager to get on the screen tonight when he's usually running away from the screen. So.
And I believe you may speak about whatever items you'd like to speak about. This is an open time for the public to bring their thoughts and considerations to the school board.
Great. Well, well, thank you also. Oh, go ahead, Jim.
I just was gonna say, but you also, this is, this is, you can speak about anything here. Not looking for a response from the board, but you can indeed speak to every, any item on the agenda when it's, when it comes up.
Great. I, I, I do have a comment on the gen, on agenda item 6.2, so I'll wait until then. Thank you so much.
All right. Then we're moving on to the reports unless it does any, excuse me, does anybody else have something they would like to bring to the board's attention? All right. Reports, the superintendent's report.
Okay, I sent out my report in writing, but I have quite a few things to add tonight. It'll be reflected in the minutes. First of all, I'm, I want to talk about the financial report. We are about 70, we are not about, we are 75% of the way through the school year, which means you'd expect 25% remaining in each of those budget lines. So if you take a look at the information that was sent to you, let me grab it myself. While I'm doing, I can keep talking that the budget itself is in very good shape. I have begun. I've asked Bernice and Ida to start to prepare end of the year projections for me. We know this is, this is not a new issue, but Article eight, the transportation is grossly over expended, but that was by design and we're sure that that's because we paid for about 104,000 for a new bus, which will be delivered late in this, end of the school year or early summer. But other than that, the only other line that's, that's over at all is system administration, Article six. And all the rest of them are 25% or higher. And the overall, if you go down to the very bottom of the page and far right hand corner, last number, the overall budget has 31.1% remaining with 25% of the year still in front of us. So we are in pretty good shape. Let me answer questions anybody has about the budget before I go on to the rest of my report. I'm not the budget, the, yeah, you can see what I have on my mind, right? Anything that anybody has with respect to the financial report?
Well, I have the comment about the debt service, but that's nothing we can do anything about, right? There, it says, I'm reading negative point 6%. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know why it's, I don't know what the negative six, I mean, we, we paid, that's only, we are a flow-through organization. We never actually get that money. That, that state funded debt and that we paid that off, this, we are paying it off right now, I should say, in this FY22. So that, that's been paid. So why it's beyond what, what we're supposed to have is something I don't have a good answer for, but but that's, that's essentially been all paid.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, let me move on then. I'm just trying to write numbers down here. I'm multitasking. It's a little easier when I'm, when people aren't waiting for me to speak, but so six, we have six members of the, of the community via Zoom. Okay. Also, under my report, as I said, it's 75% of the fiscal year completed. The overall budget is in good shape. I want you to know, this is, this is new and I just found this out yesterday, or maybe today, I don't know, but next Monday, April 10th is the town council budget workshop. So I will be there. It would be great if as many board members as possible and administrators can also be there. Starts at seven o'clock. And I've, I've sent information, basically the information I'm going to share with you tonight. I've sent that on to the town council for their, for them to have in advance of that workshop. Again, that's next Monday, April 10th at 7:00 PM. That'll be in the pack. I want you to know, getting pretty excited about a couple of things. Tomorrow technically is the closing for the lease purchase for the boilers and the lighting. All of that, it was sort of a strange process. We're not actually getting together. We had to send our information through our attorney, all of the things that needed to be signed. We signed them all, got them all in. We had to overnight them from Monday. They got there yesterday for a Bank of America, which is out of Maryland, which is where we're dealing with those guys. But everything is in, in great shape that should officially close tomorrow. And we'll be ready to, to start paying EMC for the work that you've already started for us. So that's, it's very exciting. It's been a long time coming. So the other thing is we have assigned the contract with the fire suppression system company. And that is, they are hoping to begin over April break if possible. And that, that contract had signed and returned today. Still waiting to hear from Northeast Charter about our contract extension. I'm hoping that we'll have a a contract for us to vote on at our next meeting in April. And by the way, speaking of next meeting, we, it's, we have a conflict with the planning board. They meet opposite weeks than us and because of vacation pushing ours back a week, they are there that night. They are expecting a huge crowd. So we're going to move our meeting to the small conference room. I think we still should be able to fit everybody in there, but we will be in, and you'll see that reflected on the agenda when that meeting comes out, but I'm not going to go through the spring coaches and there's, you got the list in front of you. If you don't have the list in front, it will be published when we publish the minutes. No appointments tonight. We have one resignation, Samantha Holly. She's a ed tech at the, special ed tech at the grade school, no retirements and no transfers. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has with respect to my report.
Hearing none. We can move on. The next item is the school board chair report and we will make a note that they're absent tonight and they can fill in anything for the next time and reflect upon both meetings.
You have anything you want to add as, as the vice chair?
As the vice chair, currently I do not. Thank you very much. All right. 4.3 is our cycle of committee reports, starting with finance, which is on a warrant rotation.
We did not meet.
All right. Thank you. And policy, being a member of the policy, I do not believe we met either. Is that correct?
That's correct. We do, do need to set a meeting.
Okay. Well, let's do that via email if that suits everybody and we will of course post that so that people can attend if they choose.
That's great.
All right. Negotiations, anything coming from negotiations?
No, we won't have anything all year. We, we did administration earlier in the year and we won't do anything till the fall. So that's going to be none for the rest of the year.
Curriculum, anything coming from curriculum?
Um, yeah, I'd just like to update the board on how a professional development afternoon went on 317. We got the, in the afternoon, we got the entire teaching staff together and they worked in vertical teams on specific agenda items as kind of identified by what would make sense for each of those groups. At the end of our time together, it was, it was really for me because they all had their own set agendas with folks facilitating each conversation. So it allowed for a lot of teacher leadership. Our, our youngest educators looked at K for me, which is a new curriculum program. It's an extension of pre-K for me and they started to explore that a little bit with their pre-K colleagues. Our first through third graders, teachers had conversations around social studies. Although it's not one of our larger areas, it's also not something that we have clearly outlined materials and resources for. So that was a really interesting conversation. I think with that group I sat in with them in the beginning before I kind of rotated through. Then we had fourth through seventh content area meetings, so social studies, science, ELA and math. And then we did something similar for our seventh through 11th grade. And because of the makeup of our high school, that really, even though it was seventh through 10th, most teachers taught in that, that grade range, even though we do obviously teach through 12th grade. The feedback was really good. I gave a survey out at the end of the time since I couldn't sit in all of those meetings. 87% of those folks felt prepared, having had an agenda ahead of time. 96% liked having a structured agenda and felt that it was really applicable to what they're doing. 98% said their group worked really well together, which is probably one of the biggest points of feedback because this, we've done work in our building. We do our PLCs and our content areas in our building. So having these vertical teams get together and have nearly everybody say that they worked well together was a win in my book for sure. Future curriculum work, both vertical and across grade level was the majority with some more specific feedback around that. And there was additional feedback around professional development as we plan for next year, which I'm going to be discussing with our A team at our meeting next week. So we can start looking at our goals for next year that are tied to curriculum, but also tied to our PD days and try to set a calendar a little bit earlier this year. So I think all in all, we had very positive feedback from our staff and I think they're excited and anxious to continue work as we go into the end of this year and beginning of next year.
Any comments? Megan, as a, as a teacher, I think a positive feedback from the teachers for your professional development sounds really exciting. I'm interested in like the vertical teaming sounds nice. And I was wondering if, did you, is this a time that you used any of the NWEA information that you've presented with us before, some of those threads that you pulled out of that?
So we, to be perfectly honest, Catherine, we've pivoted away a little bit from some of the professional development pieces with NAWIA, being that we're moving to the through year model this spring. And I'm not exactly sure what the, both the content area strands and the actual reporting modalities will be as a result of that. The state has made it clear that we will have a RIT score and we will also have that criterion based well below, below, at or above. And so we're kind of, I did send out an email to staff, making sure they're aware, we're going to be making some of those changes. But I wanted the conversations to be meaningful and applicable going into next year. And I just, I wanted to be cautious around the conversation with standardized testing for the spring.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ivy or Tim, do you have anything? And Alicia, anything? All right. Moving on to our next item, it is administrators' reports. We have none here. Are any administrators online have something that they would like to share in the moment? All right. Seeing none. We are now ready to move on to item five, which is old business. 5.1 is the Winthrop School Board motion to approve the 2023, 2024 school board, school operating budget.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All right. A discussion before we vote. Jim?
But I'm going to put something, I'm going to share my, share the screen here in a second. Hopefully it'll work. I sent out to you guys today, updated information. I gave you information last week at the budget workshop. And of course, we didn't vote at the budget workshop, but I got a sense that I got some guidelines from you guys. And so we have updated the budget based upon things that we picked up on last week. We had lane changes, which means teachers shifting from say the bachelor's degree to masters or to BA 15. All those types of changes have been reflected now. We have our, we did get our insurance rates. And so it made all those adjustments and the bottom line was that we, the budget has actually gone down slightly. Well, actually it's gone up, but we also discovered more revenue. So we accounted for more revenue. So the bottom line is that the budget went down to an overall impact for the taxpayers of an increase of 4.02%. I think it was 4.28 if I remember correctly, but also made the, let me share my screen, share this screen. I, I re I also sent. Come on. There we go. You all see that? The couple of changes, um, actually I'm not going to do a comparison, but the biggest I wanted you guys to know was that the, if you look at numbers, uh, number eight, the per pupil cost and went up, didn't change. But I, I, as I've looked at that numbers, numbers again, and now it actually ranks us third lowest. I miss Gardner, which is in the first column. Gardner has the lowest per pupil, lower per pupil rate than us. But that makes us this third lowest in Kenton County plus Valhiggin for whatever reason. Was included in that, that list of 12 schools. So we're still, what hasn't also changed is that we are still $2,400 below the state average. So that's, all those numbers have been updated. I added the number 11. And what I just told you guys about the town council votes on the budget on June 5th. The budget valid, actually I didn't tell you this, but the town council votes on the budget on June 5th and the budget validation referendum will be on June 13th. And the budget validation referendum is the only thing on the agenda for voting on that day. There's no municipal elections. There's no state elections, at least not here in our town. So that's why the polling hour is a little bit shorter. Usually it's eight to eight, but it will be eight to seven. And it will be at the town office, not at the high school. If you remember in the fall, we, we changed that away from the high school back to the town office. I don't anticipate a big turnout and that's either really great news or, but not very good news. You know, obviously I want to encourage every single person to vote, whether they are voting in support of the budget or not. But I just want to get this information out there as soon as possible. So and I want to take a quick second to stop that share. Well, anybody have any questions on this before? And I can't see you all. So you're going to have to make some sort of noise to make me know that you want to speak. If you want, if you have any questions about these 11 facts, and that includes community members who are on. Okay, I'm going to switch screens. Show you the numbers. And again, the school board members got this today. The town council will get it for Monday. But overall, whoops, are you, you probably can't see that. Did it come on? Doesn't look like it did.
Not yet.
All right, hold on. Hold on. Yeah, this is the one I want right here. Okay, how's that?
Thumbs up.
Yep. So this is, this is where it's been a little bit of an increase. The articles one through 11, that's a regular school budget. Or it's not regular ed, it's just regular school budget is up 2.13%. Adult ed is up $2,000. And so we have to raise $2,000 more locally. But we're not raising any money for the food nutrition program this year because we have a balance. We need to use some of that balance. So the net result is we're asking $173,000 less from the public in the, the school articles, which includes adult ed and school nutrition. So the overall impact of the budget that we're, we're asking the voters to vote on is up just, oh, just, just under three quarters of 1%. So it went from, it was 12, 714888 last year. This year is 12, 807, 601. And the next section is not working. Why isn't this working? Oh, there we go. Revenue. And now I want to make sure I clarify that I'm clear about this. Initially, we talked about we were going to lose about $361,000 in funding. And then we got an ED 279 and we're not losing that much. We're losing 140. So we, we essentially gained $220,000. But the amount that we were going to lose and the amount that the state share, and I would just point that out, this subsidy 279 is a state share of what the state is paying. So that is going up. The state is contributing $361,291.55 over last year. But if you remember, those who were on the, the board and heard you talk about this earlier, we received an additional 460 approximately from the state after we approved the budget. So the, that's why this number looks like it's, it's plus and it really is minus 140. But that, that doesn't matter. No, the number is still, the numbers. Here's a debt service you asked about earlier, somebody asked about earlier. We, we're, we lose $519,000 and change from debt service, but we also lose it from the revenue, from the expenditure side. So it's, it's a true 100% wash. But we lost $10,000 less, less in tuition. Primarily our tuition comes from fat students. And they have a number graduating this year and we're not anticipating more coming in. So it's a net result of of $10,000 less. E-rate is a federal program. We're not anticipating any money through E-rate this year. So that's $10,000 less. Main care. That, yeah, that's, that's actually not, not accurate, but that's, I'll, I'll fix that. We were looking for less. So I, I don't know, we may not change that. Gate receipts, we are getting $15,000, anticipating $15,000 less than this year. I, I anticipate we're going to make more than that, but, but Joel and, and Bernice were very clear that they, this is all we've made this year. It's $5,000. And we're having trouble getting people to collect at the door. So we're not getting as much money. Fun transfer in. Oh, you know, I gave you the, this is not the most updated version. The we, this is actually going to, this is 45,000, should, should be plus 45. That's what the issue is. We are, the fund transfer in is the money that the, the town council approved for us to pay for the, the school revolving renovation fund. So that actually should be plus 45, plus 45,000 and the main care should be minus an equivalent number. So it ends up being, this bottom line here is correct. I will make sure these numbers are, are correct by the time you see them have to, well, before, before the town council votes on it. It doesn't, none of this really affects the bottom line, but I mean, it's, it does affect the bottom line, but these numbers are, do bottom out to be the right thing. We just got these mixed up. We are carrying over 275,000 anticipated from this year. So when I say the budget is in good shape, the budget is in good shape to make sure we are not only whole, but that we're, we're, we have money that we can carry over to the FY24 budget. And I feel really confident we'll be able to do that. So if you take all of these, we have to raise $92,000 more to, to naturally expenditure side of the budget. And we're, we're losing about $20,000. So if you add this number and this number together, you get this number. 290,890, which is how much more, that number doesn't feel right to you. And I had to think about this for a second. This is 4.02% is an increase to the taxpayers. So it's not an increase in the budget. This is an increase in the budget. This is the increase in the budget. This is the net impact on the taxpayer. So it's this number here, the 29898 divided by what we asked for, from, from them last year. So that's how we arrive at that. I have a different, I'm going to stop that share for a second. And put a different one up and it's going to basically have the exact same information, but I want to show it in a different way. Okay, same numbers. You can see the point 73. I didn't highlight this one in the bottom line of point, point. Oh, this is actually correct. This is the right one. So the miscellaneous revenue, we, we, we had put 60,000 last year and it's on 50. So we're losing 50,000 there and we're adding for, um, we're adding $45,000 in. That's the money that we got from the town council to pay for the revolving renovation fund. And then here's this. So as I was saying, this number doesn't change. But here's what I was, was saying before. Here's the difference between what we had for on the 279 back in January, when we got it first and then they discovered an error and they reissued it on 328. And so it's $219,000 more we're getting that the town doesn't have to pay. That's less the town has to pay. So this is what it initially was. If you look at last year, 1022, that's where I came up with, the, not where I came up with. That's where we get the 361, 96816 that the town was supposed to pay more. So that's what it was. This is what the new impact was. It's up here. That's the difference. So instead of paying 361, we're paying 142, 76283. Still losing money, but not as much money. Just so you know, in terms of the whole increase, that 142, 76283 represents almost 2% of the increase again directly to the taxpayers. So, and that's what I said before, you take the articles one through 14, we need to raise $92,000 more to fund the expenditure side and we're losing almost $200,000 in revenue. And that means we, we have to ask the taxpayers for just under $300,000. Okay? I'll leave that up there and answer any questions that you might have. And by the way, Kelly just joined us. I don't know if she wants to, how she wants to jump in, but she is with us.
I'm good. I just have a few more minutes.
I'm good, I just have a few more minutes before I have to go into rehearsal and figure that I would. Jump on while I have the time.
Hey, you have any questions about the budget?
I don't.
Okay. Catherine, anyone else?
Does anybody else have any other questions? I do not either.
I don't have. I don't have any questions, I felt like I got all the answers. That I needed during our budget workshop that Ivy and I had. With the superintendent, and so I feel very good about the budget, especially after the news that we had. Last week with some of the revenue that we weren't aware of, and so I'm I'm feeling good and ready to take a vote.
Excellent, oh Kelly, if you're still here, you're in a great position to vote on the operating budget, so that's pretty exciting.
I'm here.
All right, so all those in favor, please raise your hand, I can see everybody, so. That is five for five yays, I guess they're called. All right, moving on to the next item, Jim, did you have that, did you write that down?
I did, and just give me a second because I, I need to. Show Kelly joining us and then she's going to leave us soon, so I have to. To mark that, okay, Hooper. At 6:30. Okay.
Alrighty, alright, the next item is the Winthrop School Board Motion to Approve 2023-2024 Adult Education Budget.
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there anything that for discussion, would anybody like to have some items for discussion?
Josh hasn't joined us tonight, but this is really, the only difference really, this this budget hasn't really gone up. The only thing that is happening is there is, we're asking $2,000 more from the town. Because of, they have decreased revenues. And you are probably all aware, you should be aware. That the, we are looking at merging with. At least Gardner perhaps more than that. In the future, but not next year, so. This is just $10,000 more being raised from the, from the community.
Thank you very much, Jim. Are we ready to take a vote? We, just a thought, I'm going to read a Zoom comment, just a thought regarding fiscal and. The comment regarding. No incoming students from Fayette. Is transportation offered for those students to encourage them to attend Winthrop?
At this point, the, at this point, the answer is no, but it's one of the things that. Well, the person who just left Fayette and I were in. Conversation about this very issue, so let me, she was actually looking to have. All of the Fayette students have to come to Winthrop. I don't think that'll be acceptable in Fayette, but we are looking at. Possibly providing transportation.
All right, thank you. All right. For a vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, that is five zero. And one more item in section five. This is the Winthrop School Board Motion to Approve 2023-2024 School Food Service and Nutrition Budget.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you, is anything anybody would like to bring up for discussion?
I would like, I didn't hear who made the second. Alicia? Or Ivy? Kelly? Thank you. This is, this is the exact same budget as last year, this is a place where. We are saving taxpayers some money this year. But I will say that it's, we're not obviously going to have a balance every year, so. This year, we're asking, we, last year, we asked 175,000 from the town, this year, we're asking for zero. So it's made the budget a little more manageable, but the 595353 is the exact same budget as last year. Or this year, I should say.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Let us now vote on the Winthrop School Board Motion to Approve 2023-2024 School Food Service and Nutritional Budget. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that is five for five, Jim?
Yep.
All right, moving on to new business. So the first item 6.1 is to approve waiving the personal finance requirement for the class of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Do the tie with Ivy and Kelly, so Jimmy can discern which one. All right, anything up for discussion about this item?
I was going to have Mr. Dufour talk about this.
Yep, and. Beanie, anyone, and I'll have Amelie and and David help me, because they helped. Really put this together. And and this came to my attention in the, in the late fall from Superintendent Hodgkin. About the personal finance requirement. And I, and I really worked with Amelie and and David over the last. What about six or eight weeks? Folks? Or so, to kind of put this together. Again, I think the concern is basically that, you know, the personal finance requirement. Which Mr. Campbell, my predecessor, had had brought to you folks and got passed last year. Was an excellent thing and none of the, none of the junior class. Would would say anything different about that, and given the opportunity to take it, they would take it. It's actually a new requirement at my, at my boys' school too, at in Auburn. It was the timing of it. That it was approved by the school board, in my understanding, was after. Core signups and course selections had had come and gone. And, you know, we have a number of students who are juniors that are taking CATS courses. And with a limited amount of sections we're able to offer personal finance. The juniors felt like it was a little bit unfair and they didn't have a heads up enough about it, and since. Course, signups had gone by. They asked me to consider this. So I sat down with some of the juniors, with with Amelie, with with sort of her experience working on the school board. And being one of the leaders in our, in our school as a senior. To really put together a student-centered, student-generated survey. To collect some data and to do some anecdotal data. And I don't know if either of you want to share a little bit about the data that you collected and the survey you put together? I don't know, David, maybe you want to start?
Muted.
Amelie, do you want to start?
Yes. So like Mr. Dufour said. We all think that the personal finance requirement is important, but a lot of juniors kind of. Like sophomore years start to plan out what courses they want to take junior and senior year, and if they want to. Take more AP classes or go to CATS, or they have certain. Electives that they want to take, so they felt that this was kind of just pushed on them a little too late and. Disrupted their plans, so there are 39 juniors in the class of 2024. 10 of them have already completed this and four of them are taking it right now. So 25 juniors will have to take this course next year. And. And there may be two or three, two, maybe three classes. Offered next year, personal finance classes, so they'll have to kind of arrange their schedules based on when those are offered. And so as you can see, 71% of juniors felt that they weren't properly made aware of this before. Signing up for classes. And most of them did say that they would be able to fit this into their schedule if they had to. But most of them don't want to, and 42% said that this kind of disrupted the plan that they had. And they felt that it was a little unfair, that they weren't properly made aware of about it. And a lot of people, like, from my perspective, like, if I were in their situation. That would have kind of disrupted my AP courses. And one student said that he's already taking AP Calculus BC, and then he doesn't want to go back and take. That type of. It is a social studies class, but also, or take that type of math. And, yeah, overall, great class, but they just wish they had been informed about it. Sooner or that it would just be waived for them.
David, do you have anything to add, or did you, did you figure out that button yet?
It's not a button thing, it was a fact that I'm on my phone because my laptop wouldn't connect and it's just, I don't. Excuse me, I don't like Zoom, I can't handle this technology crap. Anyway. The. Other. Comments, just kids weren't happy with, like, here's one quote, should not be on us for. Crap, I'm on bed, sorry, sorry. Quote, it should not be on us for being misinformed on our requirements, end quote. Just I had, like, as soon as I got. Back to school this year, I had. People coming up to me, asking me about the requirement and. How they couldn't fit it into their schedule, now it just messed everything up and they didn't think it was a requirement until we, this year. So. One second, sorry about that. I don't know what else to add, though, Amelie said basically everything.
Yeah, she did a great job, thank you, David, and thank you both. So really, I think, I think the biggest piece of it was, you know, what the students expressed to me was, just, you know. Great idea, it's the right thing to do to have it as a requirement. It was a timing issue with the signing of classes, and as you know, it's now the beginning of April and. And all of our students for the last couple of weeks have signed up for classes for next year, so. I think if we, and I had this conversation with Kelly the other day, she called me because she wasn't sure if she was going to make it. That if if we waive this requirement for the class of 2024, current juniors. We would make it a requirement for the class of 2025 and beyond. And and that. We would endeavor to to offer between two and three sections per year. And at least one section each semester, so it gave kids the opportunity to be able to take it. And then making the conscious effort to offer a section in the morning. So that our CATS students could also take the course over the, over a period of a couple of years. And just kind of phasing that in, and, you know, having as many juniors as we can, current juniors. Take the class, but it'll take that pressure off of them a little bit. And that's all I have.
Thank you, I, I think this is very thoughtful and I think the, we, moving forward, we might consider when we make these kind of changes. To schedule them in a way that is mindful of the larger scheduling picture, which I think is a good lesson to take away from this, so thank you very much, guys. Any other comments? So I believe we are ready to vote to approve waiving the personal finance requirement for the class of 2024. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And I do have a note that Kelly in absentia supports this, but I don't know if that's needed.
How many recorded this for?
Okay. All right, thank you, all right, moving to item, new item, new business number 6.2. To change the community service. Service high school diploma requirements, it is policy IKF. To 60 hours of community service. And that would be deleting 15 hours per year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about? This item?
I'm going to have Mr. Dufour speak to that as well.
So. I'm, I'm still relatively new to Winthrop, but I feel like. Finally getting my feet under me with with some things, so. Again, I had a good conversation with Kelly about this the other day. And and maybe, maybe this is more of a housekeeping item. But I am a big fan of the community service requirement. I believe 60 hours is an appropriate number for for students. And I'm sure the board is aware that. You have our current seniors, 23, and our current juniors, 24. That have a lesser requirement because they had some COVID waivers. So the 60 hours actually starts again with the class of 2025, so this year's seniors will graduate, the requirement is 30. With the COVID waivers, and then our current juniors, class of 24, have 45 hours with the one COVID waiver. So, so looking at this. Community service is something that I tried to get in in place at my old school for several years as an administrator, and. We just weren't quite there yet, so I just want folks to know that this is something that I really support. And I believe that the community service that the kids do is really, really important. But one of the things that I think I get tripped up on is. You know, when I look at IKF and I look at the graduation requirements. And I'm looking at them right now, I see that, you know, on number eight in IKF on page two of the five. 60 hours of community service per year, service 15 per year, and then students get their half credit. So when I did some fact finding with 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 staff. I was under the impression initially that was, this was a pacing model. And I guess, housekeeping wise, and talking with Kelly after I wrote my memo for the board packet. I think that's kind of what I'd like to, this to be. Is that, you know, on pace for 15 hours per year, for kids to have a total of 60. And that, once they hit their 60, that they could get their half credit awarded. Whether they're a sophomore or a junior. And. You know, we have, I'll use one sophomore as an example that has over 100 hours of community service right now. And I believe that that individual will continue to have community service. Because it's just something that they do as part of their core value. Which is, which is great. But when I fact, when I did some fact finding with staff. The intention, I believe, is that. No matter what, you know, 60 is the minimum, but kids have to do 15 a year. So if a student has 100 hours right now, that student would still, under these requirements, be required to do 15 more as a junior. And 15 more minimum as a senior. So what I'd like to do is, you know. Have a 60 total. And if they, if they meet those as a sophomore or as a junior, great. If they want to get more, great, and assign that credit afterwards, once they hit their 60. But not, not really force kids to do. You know, if they've met or gone beyond it, to kind of take that off their plate. Or. Because I think it, it, it just creates, from what I've seen in my eight months as principal. It creates some situations where kids aren't always as honest as they, as they should be. And I think no matter what we do, one of the things we're always going to run into is. You're going to have some kids that are always going to wait until the very last minute to kind of finish everything up. So that's, that's all from me, and if folks have questions, I'm happy to do my best for them.
Thank you very much, Jay. Does anybody have questions for Jay? Oh, I see a hand raised, Stephen McDermott.
Hi, this isn't a question for Jay, so I'd be happy to let. Alicia go and just wait a moment as well. Whichever you.
You unmute or?
Yes, so I can, I just had a question.
Um yes, so I can, I just had a question. Um. The, what is this? Where do we get the sixty hours from? Is that part of the School Board Association policy? The IKJ or is that something that we as as a community in of Winthrop come up with a sixty hours requirement?
Megan, it sounds like you are have some information about this.
It's just part of the board policy.
Okay, and will we continue to offer like the days of caring and things like that for students to get their hours in?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I and I've talked to to Joel and some others in the school community. To try to do more things for kids, more opportunities um on campus and with NHS. That are that are that are homegrown from the adults in the buildings. So that we allow kids to have more opportunities. So we're actually just. Hooking them up and trying to make, you know, these inroads a little bit easier rather than having them try to find a lot of things out. Um so that's that's been my goal from the beginning as well.
All right, thank you. Stephen, do you have a comment about this item?
Yeah, hi, thank you. I really appreciate the thoughtful conversation, the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephen McDermott. I'm a resident of Winthrop. Um I'm speaking on behalf of myself this evening, but I'm I'm the Vice President of the Board of Directors of New Beginnings. An organization that serves youth experiencing homelessness and provides a variety of resources. Uh ranging from emergency shelter to education services. And when we think about um policies such as this, we want to think about the disproportionate negative impact. Or barriers that this can create for students that may be experiencing homelessness, housing insecurity. Or are otherwise economically disadvantaged. And while we are trying to uh help them achieve their educational or other personal goals, are we putting other barriers in their way? Um I really appreciated Mr. Du Force's comments about creating homegrown or other in in-house ways for them to meet this requirement. But really, is there a way within the policy to ensure that equity is available for all students? Who may not otherwise be able to meet a volunteer or extracurricular time because they're um looking for housing. Being transported a significant amount of time, uh working to support their themselves or their family, depending on their emancipation status. You know, um. I I don't need to get into some statistics. I'm sure you're all familiar with the uh SDA dashboard and. That thirty two percent of students in Winthrop are economically disadvantaged. Uh one percent of students in Winthrop meet the definition of homeless, although that could be as high as five percent because homelessness, the experience of homelessness is generally underreported. You know, so I would just like that to be considered when we draft policies like this and would hope that the Towns McEnvento liaison was a. Was a incorporated into the drafting of this policy. Um and would just, you know, individuals with lived experience were also taken into consideration when drafting these policies. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this perspective. And again, I really appreciate the thoughtful approach that you've all taken this evening.
Thank you, Stephen. A really uh valid point. Does anybody have something to discuss? Jim?
Actually, um. I understand your your perspective greatly and I appreciate you sharing that with. I was just gonna say that Sue. Boss at our McKinney Vento liaison is on the Zoom. I don't know. I don't want to put Sue on the spot, but you certainly are free to weigh in. And Steve, Stephen, this um this policy has existed um. In Winthrop for a long time, so it's, I don't think there's anybody currently on this Zoom that was probably around when it was created, so I don't know. Who was involved in the the initial part, but but we do review all the time and Sue always weighs in as part of her job. Sue?
Yeah, I would just add that um we do um in some cases, if need be, waive the requirement for certain students. Um and McKinney Vento status, homeless um. Status would be one of those that we would consider for sure. And Steve, um to your point, I do think it is underreported in Winthrop. Um there's a lot of. You know, I don't want to use the word shame, but some sometimes there's shame associated with that, and so folks do underreport. Um and Steve, I'd love to get in contact with you at some point so we can have um some connections.
I'm happy to to reach out. I think the other part is is when we place the burden on the student. To ask for a waiver, particularly the students who are likely to comply, you know, to meet this requirement. We're likely talking about high achieving students who want to go on to that next um that next step. Potentially to school and it is adding another uh obstacle for them to face, for students who are already demonstrating a level of resilience. In face of obstacles that they should that they shouldn't have to face in their life. So how can we create policies? That allow them to walk through with dignity and equity. Um to face their peers in a way that doesn't also call them out and separate them and make them more visible. For like for a way that doesn't further stigmatize them. So I again, I this is such a thoughtful, I really do appreciate the thoughtful way in which we're having this conversation.
And and Stephen, I really appreciate your point and I think it touches on something that uh Jim brought up and Alicia. I think it is some, I I would consider as a board member that we really want to ensure. That we're normalizing uh community service, that it is part of our educational programming. And so. Um I I believe two point five days is spread out through the year, whether they're um five half days. Or two days of uh structured organization in which you can do community service might be a valuable thing because I think it is. Critical that there are not unintended barriers. And this is a very vulnerable population and we want to do everything we can to. Make them part of the world of school and not put up differentiations, so. I guess what I'm saying is, I think I'd like us to consider whether or not, if we're going to have a requirement such as this, we then also have. A uh structure within the high school in which the students could complete um they required hours within the school day, the school schedule. Jim, yes, sorry.
I just would say that I think this is a great conversation, but I think this the specific request tonight and the motion is that we. Uh delete the fifteen, the, I think what Jay was trying to say is fifteen hours, I think was intended to be a pacing guide, not a requirement. So I I think if we can eliminate that tonight by voting to do that, then I think Catherine, you and Alicia are the. Perfect two to be thinking about this conversation. I think we can go back and take a look at the policy, which we did fairly recently, but I think a different lens now. Um to see if we need to make some other changes to address the issues that have been brought up. But I think the specific request tonight is to um eliminate the requirement of fifteen per year.
If I could just comment on on that by, if you're going to change the language to sixty cumulative. The the benefit to fifteen per year. Potentially is that if a student experienced incidental homelessness, rather than chronic homelessness, which students are more likely to, maybe more likely to experience. They may be able to get back on pace. Rather than needing to feeling the need to complete thirty hours in one year or or forty five hours in another year. So what are the structures that can be put in place so students feel comfortable? To know that they won't all of a sudden have to make up X number of hours. Or feel that they should disengage from education because they know they won't be able to meet volunteer hours.
So um Catherine, if I may, I I think that's an excellent point, but I I would use the exact same argument to to say that's why we should. Because I think there may be time, particularly for kids that have um intermittent um issues with homelessness or other things going on in their life. And and you know, I I want to give them greatest opportunity if they. If they, you know, have lots of opportunities and things are pretty stable in their life and they can get thirty hours in. That shouldn't count as one year, that should count as thirty hours, uh not fifteen and then another fifteen to follow you with maybe having major disruption in their life and. In fifteen hours is not realistically to not realistic to ask from them, so um. I I think I understand both sides of that that question. I I also want to.
Sorry. Say, I I think um as part of policy member, I think I actually would lean more towards um tabling this. And putting it on the top and presenting it back next time with some language within that or having discussions about that. Um the difference, um I mean, I don't mind voting on that. Um maybe we can just bring it up in a huge additions to future items. But I I think, I think it sort of needs to go, I think it would be nice if the philosophy was that these things are put in tandem. That they're not separate um thought bubbles, that when you have something like this, that you're considering the whole student body equally and. Right from the foundation, it's sort of like Sue Foss that you talk about, all special ed students are regular ed students. I think that's a really important uh lens to use. Mr. Du Four?
So, I mean, although this is a, in my opinion, a housekeeping item, I it it is. As I told Jim when I met with him about this initially, this is one small piece of. My hopefully bigger play here to kind of alleviate some barriers with community service. So I think all of you are sort of uncovering some of the things that I wanted to explore over a a year or two. Um you know, I I I come from a place where I I worked for a long time where where we really had to look through a lens of equity. Uh because we we did have um a a number of our student population, more so than Winthrop, that were. That were in generational poverty um or that were non-white students. Um and didn't didn't have the same opportunities as everybody else all the time. Um so. Um I I really would love to work some more with you folks to kind of tease this out, uh but I think it'll take some time. But I I do think that this housekeeping item is is one way that we can reduce this barrier a little bit. It's it's a good first step.
Any other comments? So the motion as it stands is to change the community uh school service, the community service, high school diploma requirements. Policy IKF to sixty hours of community service, deleting the fifteen hour per year constraint. Without comments, uh. Those of you in favor of this to pass, please raise your hand. Uh Stephen, again, I'd re- I'm really glad you showed up tonight and thank you very much for sharing your perspective. I think you've been very valuable to our community. All right, next item is six point four, which is to nominate Krista Roddy as uh Winthrop Middle School's math. Science teacher.
Still moved.
All right.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ivy. Uh is there a discussion?
Um this male is still there, yeah.
There I am. I I would just like to say I am thrilled to have Ms. Roddy join the Winthrop Middle School staff um coming back next year. She's brought um. A wealth of information and knowledge, she's experienced, a teacher at the middle level, loves middle school. Um has really shown a lot of passion and has brought a lot of energy and enthusiasm to Winthrop Middle School. She's right now currently working on our school news with students. She's also taking on our uh website for us and just. Is very collaborative and um great instructional strategies in the classroom, so. Uh I'm thrilled that she was here this year and I'm even more excited that she'll be joining us back next year.
Thank you very much, Lori.
Uh Catherine, I just want to clarify, just in case people are wondering, she was with us as a COVID teacher this year using S R Fund, so. Um if we did not have a position vacant, then she would not be returning. Um but we are. We do have math science position available and I'm I have to echo what um. Uh Miss Snail just said, she's been a very, very, very impressive and tremendous addition to the middle school staff, so. I strongly encourage you to to uh support her election.
Thank you, Jim. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that would be four of us.
Is um Krista Krista maybe on? I don't know if she wants to say something. Okay.
She is.
Hi, yeah, yeah. It's crazy at my house because it's it's bedtime, but um I just wanted to say hi and say thank you. That's it.
Very welcome.
Thanks, Krista.
All right, uh now item seven is suggested additions to future agendas by school board members. So Tim, do you have anything to add?
No.
Thank you, Alicia.
No.
And Ivy.
Uh no, but I would like to add um discussing the um community service hours.
Yep, I wrote I wrote that down already.
Okay.
But Ivy, I second that. I would like that to be officially noted that I too would like to uh put on our a future agenda. A a discussion about this.
Awesome.
All right.
Catherine, I just for clarity, I I'm sorry, this, I thought. I put down that we should prioritize this as an issue for the policy committee, so for you and Alicia and I to. Um do some work on this and then we can bring that back to the board.
Um Ivy, I mean, I okay either way, Ivy would uh you either like, what is your position on it? Would you like to have it as as a as a board meeting discussion? First, second, would you like to come to the policy meeting? It what what are your thoughts on that?
Uh I would love to join the policy meeting for that. That'd be great.
We will let you know then, and then we will bring that back to the board after we discuss it a bit.
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you.
Um, all right, now moving to school board comments. Um Tim, do you have any comments?
Yes, I'm gonna plug again uh next Saturday. Uh Patriot State Pitter Patter Five K, boss at twenty uh twenty four. I am gonna be there. I'm running it. Like to see as much staff or. School board members, community there as we can get. His family, kids can run. Baby can be pushed, anybody can come.
Great, great. What time is this, Tim?
Starts at nine, get there at least eight by by eight thirty.
And this is in the high school parking lot?
Yeah, high school parking lot, you'll find, you'll find where the group is.
All right, thank you, Tim. All right, Alicia?
No comments.
No comments. Uh Ivy?
No, all set, thank you.
All right, um Jim, do I go to you next or do I do my comments?
I don't usually make comments under this, so. I use the good. You go to David? David or Amelie?
Sorry, David and Amelie, sorry, sorry. Uh all right, Amelie, uh do you have some comments to share with us?
So, yes, so first of all, I want to say that um March Madness a couple of weeks ago was super fun since. I haven't been at a meeting since then, but that's always a big thing that the high school looks forward to. And a lot of planning and prep goes into that and it's just, it's just a really great way to. Kind of bring everyone together and get through the harder parts of the winter and spring month, so a huge thank you to Misty Set because she did so much work for that. Um and then I also want to say that we had an NHS induction ceremony um on Monday. And I want to thank everyone who was able to come to that and congratulate the new inductee and the new officers. Um and Mashaw for putting that together and being the NHS advisor because that was, it was a very, very nice celebration of what we've done over the year. And for NHS also, I think tonight, one of the members is posting. An Amazon wishlist for um some materials that we need for one of our quarter projects, so. Please keep an eye out for that and I'll keep plugging that and share some more information about that. Um but we're really excited to put those things together. And then also, Misty sent us all a formal invite, but the Arts and Humanities Night at the high school is next um Wednesday, the twelfth. And we're all very excited for that and I hope that a lot of community members will come for that. And I'll leave the spring sports to David.
All right, now I gotta talk about him.
All right, now I gotta talk about them. Now, um, first want to apologize for being unprofessional earlier. I was frustrated. Second of all, yeah, come, please come down to the Pitter Patter. It's a run, walk, nine AM like, uh, Mr. West said. And I have a bet going on with one of my teachers for that, so if, if I beat him, we get, we get something for my class, so I have to train for that now. But yeah, spring sports have started. I am just excited for them. Doing two is a lot of work and very tiring, but excited to see how both teams do and all teams do because let's go Ramblers. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, as acting chair for today, I would like to thank all of you for, uh, your support and help, uh, me manage doing this for the first time, so thank you very much for that. And I have no additional comments tonight. Um, Jim, is there anything that you wanted to say right at the end?
No, I was just clearing my throat, sorry.
Right. All right then. Um, item nine is executive session, and there is none tonight. So we are going to move without further ado to the adjournment. And, uh, without objection, the school board chairperson declares the meeting adjourned at seven thirteen.
Awesome.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Have a great night.